I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd please remain standing while we have the invocation from.
Will you pray with me? Our heavenly Father, we do thank you for our community. We thank you for the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. And as a community, thank you for our leaders. Thank you for our infrastructure and the workers that help keep this place a beautiful place. Father, we ask that you be with our meeting tonight. We have several things going on, renewals, buildings, and all of that kind of stuff. We just pray that you be with us as we visit together and come up with the best idea for the betterment of this community. And so we ask your guidance and direction. We pray all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brother Don. Called order, Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting for Tuesday, July 18th, 2017. Do we have any public comments? Hello? What, are we? All good?
She was helping to get my pad.
Ah, okay. Very well. Seeing there are no comments, moving on to item three, the consent agenda, and which is only one item, which is approval of minutes of the Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting held June 20th of 2017. Any comments or corrections, or has everybody had a chance to look it over? Not, I entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Everybody give their votes.
All but Grant.
Let's see the votes, please. Thank you very much. Looks like we have a unanimous for all present to approve the minutes. Moving on to item number four, since it's a continuation of city council workshop discussion of the three items, the Harrison Avenue Bridge, the water drainage, and also discussion of maintaining the pond at Mineral Wells Park, since there were no further discussion, we will continue this and take it to the retreat that we'll be having next month. And great concept, and look forward to looking into it and trying to do, seeing what we can do with it, make this thing happen. I think it'll be great. Looks great. Really enjoying it. Moving on to under five, discussion of the fiscal year 16 annual financial statement and auditor's report. Anything from staff, please? Our auditor is here.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm Lonnie Heim. I'm the engagement partner on, with HBC CPAs, I might add, and the engagement partner on your audit. And Chris Heim is here with me. He's, he was the manager on the job, probably was involved in more than, more than half the work. And I just wanted to do a brief presentation of the 9/30/16 annual financial report and our opinion on it. So if you would turn to page three and four, you know, this is the table of contents. And so my point would be that what we, what we did and the results of our work are contained on pages five and six, and then 90 through 92. So up at the very front and at, and at the very end, we, we issue our reports. And everything else in between is, is kind of produced by city staff and the, and the accounting firm that they hired to assist them. So I would probably say and emphasize that as you sit down and analyze this report, if and when, you, you would look at, you know, the management's discussion and analysis because it's very informative. It gives you trends from prior year to current year, talks about things, you know, assets that were acquired, what happened in the debt section, and so on and so forth. The basic financial statements on pages 18 through 28, that's kind of the 30, 30,000 foot level, if you will, of, of everything that, that encompasses the operations of the city, including the public trust. So as you, as you get further into the footnotes, you know, in pages 29 through 70, and back toward the back, you get more detailed and more of a drill down, ground level look at what's, what's going on in the funds and accounts. So just a little bit of a information there about how to kind of attack these, because there's 92 pages, obviously, and it's very detailed and complex, I would say. So on pages five and six, this is our report, our auditor's report. Now, auditors have four levels of reporting when they perform an audit. The best being an unmodified report and the worst being an adverse opinion, meaning that the statements do not present the financial, financial position and results in accordance with GAAP. So, so our opinion is unmodified, and that is, you know, the best opinion you can get. It, it simply means that these statements are a fair presentation of the city's financial position and results of operations for the year ended September 30, 16. And it's not a clean bill of health, meaning that, you know, we can't say that the financials are, not without their problems, but the, the actual numbers are reported fairly and in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So, and, and our opinion actually is on the bottom of page five. We have paragraph under opinions. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to but present fairly in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city as of September 30th, and the changes in financial position, changes in cash flow for the year ended, then ended, in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. So these statements, the, the key is the statement that they do present fairly in all material respects.
So all of that says pretty good?
That's, that, that all says it's pretty good.
Okay.
So on pages 90 and 91, as part of the audit, we look at internal controls. And when we do testing and we analyze the internal controls, as we perform the audit, we're required to disclose any findings that we have related to weaknesses, whether they be significant, what we define as significant deficiencies, or even material weaknesses, which are more serious. However, we didn't find any significant deficiencies or weaknesses in internal control that we felt were worthy of a finding. So we also, as we perform the audit, we're required to pay attention to the laws, regulations, contracts that you enter into as a city, and whether or not you've complied with those. And we found that, we didn't find, we didn't have any findings related to that. We found that there were no findings, and so we, we pretty much giving you a clean opinion there. So now, you know, we had a discussion last year about this finding related to reconciliation of the accounts receivable detail to the, to the books, I mean, to the general ledger, the accounting records. And we're happy to report that that has, you know, we have actually looked forward past the end of the year. We looked at last year and for, and even forward beyond the year end, and that, we feel, has been resolved to our satisfaction. So we've removed that finding. And that's, that's a finding that has been on there several years. So we just felt it important that, to show that there has been a lot of progress there and that we, we, we felt comfortable removing that finding now. So, and that, that's on page 92. There's not much to that page, but, you know, that was the finding that we had in the prior year, and we've just mainly just said that this has been corrected. So that's really kind of, you know, it in a nutshell with, you know, not enough time to get into all the numbers and things, so might just open it up to questions at this point, if there are any.
Well, thank you very much for being here and giving us this overview and that actually that we're, looks like we're getting things taken care of and getting things corrected that, because I remember that last year and we talking about that. And I'm glad that things are finally working themselves out and getting some of this accounting taken care of. Any questions from anybody else? So it sounds like we, we have some work to do, but still, everything is perking along pretty good for the city of Guthrie.
Yes. And we, we want to also mention, we appreciate the work that Kim did and her staff and the other staff of the city, that we appreciate everything they did to help us get through the audit, because it is time consuming for them, disrupts their day. And they, they tend to drop everything and run for us when we come.
Well, great. Well, thank you very much for all your help and for the input and for finding that we're, and letting us know that we're actually doing pretty good.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
I think it would be appropriate to commend Kim as our city clerk finance director and her staff for the good job they do as far as our budgeting and accounting records.
Agreed. Yep. Thank you. Let's see. That being the last item on the agenda, number six, the Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting is hereby closed. And we open city council. Call to order the city council for Tuesday, July 18th, 2017. Number two on the agenda is the consent agenda. A is approval of minutes of the Guthrie City Council Meeting held June 20th, 2017. B is budget amendment number 12, amendment, mending the budget for the general fund, fire fund, grant fund, and capital projects fund. C is declare select city property that has reached its useful life, become obsolete and/or is not functioning properly as surplus property, and allow the purchasing agent to dispose of said property in a way that is most beneficial to the city of Guthrie. Any questions, comments, or concerns on those items? Not hearing any, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
And a second. Cast your vote.
All but Grant.
It's unanimous for all those who are here to approve the consent agenda. Moving on to item three, discussion of the fiscal 16 annual financial statement and auditor's report. Seeing as how we had that discussed in the public works, I believe it's all the same. We're, it's, everything is fine, the same, sir. So having done that, we have no action there. Move on to item four, discussion possible action to approve resolution number 2017-13 establishing the 911 emergency telephone fee for calendar year 2018. Any comments from staff?
Kim, do you want to address that one?
It's, it's the same as last year. It's a renewal.
This is just the housekeeping we do every year for the 911 that we have to do. This is just normal housekeeping. So seeing as how that is, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Please cast your vote.
All but Grant.
And it is unanimous for all those who are present to continue the nine, establish the 911 emergency telephone fee. Moving on to five, discussion and possible action to approve conveyance, a gas line right-of-way easement to One Oak Hydrocarbon LP on city-owned property. Yes, comments from, from staff, please?
We had Bill Myers, our city engineer, review these leases. I might let him just say a word as far as his review of those leases. Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Right. We looked over the instruments that One Oak submitted to us. The first submitted had more of a, just a completely blanket easement. They had given us some arrow photos where they showed us the route they wanted to go. We asked them to come back and, and edit the easements and put it in more of a meets-and-bounce form. So the, the easement you have in your packet or that's, that you, to approve is a meets-and-bounce type easement, is approximate due, and due to the, the condition of the property, they're basically going to follow the path that we have, that is in the easement, but it's not an exacting meets-and-bounce description, but it's, it's not a, truly a blanket easement as well. And I mean, so we feel comfortable with what they're proposing, and so that's, that's what we've recommended. If you can move forward with it, it'd be good.
Okay. And I think One Oak may have calculated the value of that easement, so you might want to let the city council know.
Yes, please.
Thank you for your time this evening. I'm Art Bohmeyer with One Oak Real Estate. To keep this brief, we calculated payment at the rate of $225 per rod. There's a total of 384.4 rods across the five city parcels. That represents the total payment for rights of $86,490. In addition to that, we've agreed to a $500 per easement, easement acre payment that totals That all totals to $93,740.
That's very much. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for the input on that. Thank you for letting us know that. And again, that's not, Bill, that's not going to impact all our easements that you've looked at it and you're super happy with it. So, great. Any discussion, any comments from council? If there's no comments, I would entertain, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Easement. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Please cast your vote.
All but Grant.
It's unanimous for, to grant the easement for all those who are present. Great. Thank you very much. I think that'll, nice little, nice little bit of money for the city. Moving on to number six, discussion and possible action to approve a hangar property lease agreement with JM Back Holdings LLC to lease hangar site number 20D to build a 50-foot-by-55 hangar. Discussion from.
Slone.
Slone is not here.
Cannot be here tonight because.
Can we continue this until she is?
No, we need to get this done so they can get building on.
Yeah.
And this is a routine. It's a typical lease.
We've, this is just, we've done these leases out there before. They're all pretty, well, cut and dried, especially with government and the way they're, the way it works out.
She actually asked that it be done tonight because we're behind time letting these people get up there and struck.
And, and these are reviewed by our airport advisory board, and they have reviewed both of these and concurred with them. And item six is a lease of property for a new hangar, and the lease of the ground is consistent with all of the other leases.
Okay.
And then the next item is just agreeing to the assignment of a lease because one owner selling it to another, and we have to approve assigning the lease to, to the new owner.
Okay. So, any other comments? I entertain a motion to approve the lease.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Everybody cast your vote, please.
All but Grant.
Show us your votes, please. All unanimous for all those present to grant the airport lease. Number seven would be, as we just said a little bit, discussion possible action to approve the assignment of the leases for hangar space number 10, inclusive of eight T-hangers in the middle of the building, but excluding the hangers on the north and south end, and space number 14, five port, eight port hangers on a concrete pad, and one port-to-port hangar located on the east ramp from Excelsior Properties LLC to TNT Insurance Company LLC. Again, that's just conveyance from one party to another. Any questions? Comments?
So moved.
Motion.
Motion. We have a motion and a second, so please cast your votes.
All but Grant.
Please show us. All unanimous for those present. That's great. So sale of property. Moving to number eight, discussion and possible action to confirm the mayor's nomination to appoint Danny Smith to the Guthrie Park Board to fill a vacant, unexpired term through the date of the first regular city council meeting in June of 2018. This is the mayor's nominee. Any other comments from?
I've spoken with the gentleman, and I think he would be excellent.
Perfect. Any other comments?
So moved.
If not, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Please cast your ballot.
All but Grant.
And it is unanimous for those who are here to appoint Mr. Danny Smith to the Guthrie Parks Board. Very well. Thank you. Moving number nine, discussion possible action for the mayor's appointment of Dr. Irvin to the planning commission. At this time, there is still some questions, and so we will continue this item for review till next council meeting. Moving on to number 10, discussion and possible action to confirm the mayor's appointment of Lloyd Lentz to the Historic Preservation Commission, serving as a representative of the Logan County Historic Society for a three-year term expiring on March 31st, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
And we have a second. Please cast your ballot.
All but Grant.
And show us what we, and it is unanimous for all those present to appoint Mr. Lloyd Lentz to the Historic Preservation. And let's see, that's, we move right on to item 11, the city manager's report.
Aaron has some slides and videos he's going to put up as I make my city manager's report. Bear with us as we try to synchronize this. Merritt Tennis and Track Systems has started the work on the capital improvement projects at Mineral Wells Park and Highland Park. Of course, we are putting a basketball court in Mineral Wells, and then we are rebuilding the existing tennis courts, or refurbished them in both Mineral Wells and Highland Park. The contract for this project was $267,880, and that is part of our capital improvement program sales tax that was approved back in February 2016. The, our street project for this year has been completed. We repaved 2.8 miles of streets, and we expended $461,599, and $200,000 of those dollars came out of the CIP sales tax, and then the rest of it was from other sources of our funds. The, we put new parking in Highland Park and also put some by what is commonly referred to as the Girl Scout cabin. Guthrie Police Department has new flooring as part of our reflooring city hall project. In both the police department and city hall, city hall was built in 1996, and this is the first time we have replaced the carpet in tile. And it's more than just a aesthetic situation. We had places in the carpet that had worn through all the way to the concrete floor. It had stretched to the point that it'd become a tripping hazard. So I think we got the value out of our carpet over the last 20 years, and it was time to replace it. Again, this is another project out of the CIP funds. Should be finished this week. And then we want to talk about Red Brick Nights. The estimated crowd for Red Brick Nights on July 1st, along with the fireworks, brought 15,000 people to our downtown area, and it was a huge success. The city, of course, is one of the sponsors of that event, but I'd like to give special thanks to the Red Brick Nights Committee, James Long, Justin Fortney, Eddie Coleman, and Tracy Sirdan from the Chamber of Commerce. They put in a lot of effort and have been key to the success of Red Brick Nights last year and again this year. And we also want to send a special thank you to local fireworks retailer, Fireworks of Poppin'. They operate, operated by Calvin and Lisa Hoover for providing a tremendous fireworks show during the event. And of course, the, the next one will be the first Saturday in August. Some new economic developments to pass along. Taco Bueno will be moving into the old barbecue restaurant off of Highway 33 along I-35, and they are getting, in the process of getting their building permit. Tokyo Sushi will be moving in right behind the Taco Bueno, as well as a third location for Messy Donuts and Bakery that will be directly west of the Taco Bueno, or in the old Long John Silver's Building. With those three things, we won't have a dark storefront out by 33 and Highway 35, which is a good thing when you're trying to recruit others, when you're trying to recruit other new businesses in town. If you have dark storefronts, that raises questions. So not only are those good projects, but it will also enhance our efforts on recruiting others. New car wash being built directly south of the F and M Bank off of Highway 33. Just want to point out some of the activities going on in our community. City staff gathered for a picnic with great food, fun, and fellowship, and a chance to cool off by swimming at Highland Park on June 23rd. It's well-received by our staff. We think it's, those kinds of things are good to enhance morale and camaraderie between staff and show our appreciation for the hard work our staff does. Our GTV video producer, Aaron Ryburn, in addition to covering our various meetings, he has rolled out episode three of the Guthrie Artist Showcase featuring G Gallery and Glass Studio, as well as the mayor's segment called "All About Guthrie," showcasing the Owens Place Art Museum, and then also the new chamber chat and a piece promoting Red Brick Nights. So Aaron's been very busy, not only covering our meetings, but also putting together things that we can use to promote our community for both community and economic development and tourism purposes. Aaron has been working with Travel OK to promote festivals and events along with tourism on their Facebook page. And Aaron is also going to be working with Bank First to launch of their new site, bankfirst.tv, which will showcase our festivals, museums, and events free of charge at Bank First. So that'd give you, it's not a complete list, but give you some idea of our capital improvement projects that are moving forward with the sales tax that our local residents passed and some of the activities of staff in, in recent weeks. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Leroy. Appreciate it. Lot going on, lot of good things going on. Appreciate you giving us that report and the pictures for it. Moving on to 12, any other, let's see, from the city council. Let's see, go from Councilman Smedley.
Thank you, staff, for everything you do, and thank you, Leroy. You've been pretty good to us. You've been pretty good to us.
Councilman Case.
Kim, you do a wonderful job. You really do, and the rest of our staff do too. Tanny, thank you for the job you do. Something that didn't get mentioned, I think, Leroy, was, and maybe I'm not supposed to say this, I'm not sure, but Roma's was recently asked to host Discover Oklahoma.
Yeah, Discover Oklahoma did a feature story on Roma's. We've not been told yet when it will air, but yes, that was a great opportunity to showcase our Italian food in the community. While they were there filming it, we talked to them about some other events and opportunities in our community, and so we'll be working with Discover Oklahoma maybe to do some feature stories on other events and activities and things in our community as well.
There's a lot of good things going on.
Councilman Taylor.
I just want to say the same thing, thanks for what the staff does. And one quick question, how did the chief come through his surgery today? Does anybody know? Did he do okay?
Yeah.
Good, good deal. And I know this is not fun. I know he's been, this is what, the second one, I think, and I liked the last, third one the last couple of weeks. Okay, that's not good. But at least he's up, maybe he'll get back here before long, and this time, don't hurry back, chief. Stay whatever you need to do. Get relaxed. I think we've got plenty of manpower to take care of it, so. Other than that, I think, I appreciate everything you do too, Kim. Thank you.
Council Lady Page.
Great minds must all be in the same channel tonight because I was going to say, Tanny has really stepped up to the plate. He got handed a lot of things to have to do right off the bat. Good job. And you for stepping up. Chief Swigger's got a good department, thank goodness. He's got people he can depend on. I know that we're working short in some areas, and everybody seems to just take hold and do their jobs. Kim, good job, girl. To you and your staff. Thanks to everybody for all that they do.
Yes, and thank, yes, and that's really all in the same vein here, that thank you, Kim, for taking care of the office with the audits and everything that's going on, and we got a good bill of health, and thank you, staff, and everything that's going on, and Tanny coming back in, and thank you very much for picking up, I mean, that's, I'm sure it's picking up what Maxine did is figuring that out is, I'm sure it's a lot of fun. And yeah, thoughts are with Chief Swigger. I, we wanted to find out, and glad that he's doing well. Our prayers and our thoughts are with him and his family, and hopefully, he's getting to feel a whole lot better. But thank you all, staff, for everything that you all do and keep us looking good. So, moving on now to the next thing would be, we need to consider approval to convene into executive session pursuant to the authority of Title Twenty-Five, Section Three-O-Seven as follows. We need to talk about the purpose of discussing the purchase or appraisal of real property, which would be the State Publishing Building. Section Three-O-Seven-B-two for the purpose of discussing negotiations concerning employees and representative employees group, which would be the collective bargaining agreement with the local firefighters. And also the same Section Three-O-Seven-B-two for purposes of discussing negotiations concerning employees and representative employees group for paternal order of police, Lodge One-O-Five here in Guthrie. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And we, may we have our vote, please?
All votes ready?
May we see all eye to go into executive session? We are there, folks. Thank you very much. We will be back.